I have to find my reading glasses. All right, I'm calling to order special work study session of Tuesday, May 24th. Our school plans for student achievement elementary schools. Can we get a roll call, please?
Student trustee Dana.
Here.
Student trustee Lira. They're absent tonight. Trustee Boyd. Running late. Trustee Davidson.
Here.
Trustee Dos.
President.
Vice President Throng is absent for the record. President Hinckley.
Here.
Superintendent Wells.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Could we have somebody, maybe trustee Dana, to be in reading our mission and vision statement?
Not at all.
Do you want it posted?
Yeah. I'm a little sick, so you can probably hear it in my voice, but I probably won't be turning my camera on for the duration, just to let you guys know. Anyways, the mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. ASD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student. And then the meeting norms are as follows. One, maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Two, ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Three, endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for students. And four, make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view. No, you're great.
Great, thank you. Sorry to make you read all that when you're not feeling well. So we just need to approve our one item agenda for tonight, which is a review and discussion of the 2223 school plans for student achievement for all three elementary sites. Can I get a motion?
We approve the agenda. Sorry.
Second. Go ahead. Hey, student trustee Dana.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes. All right, so our agenda is approved with the three of us who are here, and we now, I'll hand it over to you Superintendent Wells.
Thank you, President Hinckley. Tonight, we'll be looking at our school plans for student achievement, and this will be facilitated tonight by our assistant superintendent, Dr. Anne Shin.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wells. Principal Sinclair will share her screen so we can begin the presentation. And good afternoon again, Superintendent Wells, board trustees, Albany community. We are here this afternoon to learn about the newly adopted 202223 school plan for student achievement for Oceanview, Marin, and Cornell Elementary Schools from our principals Sinclair, Ryan Mueller, and Paul. They will present their school plans, and after the entire presentation, we will engage in a Q and A session. Next slide, please. And before I hand it over to them, I will briefly review the purpose and goal of the school plan for student achievement, as well as the process for the development of the school plan for student achievement, otherwise known as the SIPSA. Then our site leaders will present the components of their plans, which include the school vision and mission, school population, the SIPSA goals, and for each of the goals, they will share the identified needs, annual measurable outcomes, analysis of successes, challenges, and changes, and planned strategies and activities to support those goals. And lastly, they will conclude with their next steps in this continuous cycle of improvement. Next slide, please. The school plan for student achievement is a school-level strategic plan that is aligned to the district-level strategic plan known as the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan. The purpose of the SIPSA is to coordinate the actions, services, strategies, and activities of the school site personnel to improve student achievement and other measurable outcomes. The goal of the SIPSA is to direct resources where they will most effectively improve student academic achievement and outcomes by implementing research-based strategies and interventions for all and subgroups of students as informed by the data. Next slide, please. The development of the SIPSA is a collaborative process that involves the educational partners of the entire school community. And in this collaborative process, the school staff have the most critical role. The staff is responsible for administering assessments and analyzing student data. As a result of that analysis, they develop and implement strategies and activities to respond to that data. After the implementation, they monitor the effectiveness of the strategies and activities to make adjustments as needed. And they are constantly working within the cycle of continuous improvement to review data, reflect on their practices, to make decisions to refine or revise, and redo or redirect strategies and resources to meet the needs of students. The school site council also has an integral role in this process. The team monitors the implementation of the plan, provides input for the recommendation of strategies and activities. They also evaluate the effectiveness of the planned activities and give the site approval of the plan before recommending it for board approval. And today, the site council-approved plans are being brought to us for discussion before the final step of the board approval. And now I hand it off to Principal Sinclair to share the Oceanview plan with us.
Okay, hi, everybody. Thanks for having us here. It's great to be here. I'm going to start off by just giving you Oceanview's mission, vision, and mission. The mission of Oceanview is to support a comprehensive educational experience for all students while also inspiring them to explore their community and the world with compassion, integrity, and courage. We strive to build a strong educational foundation with high expectations for all students while providing academic and social-emotional supports to empower students to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. This is a little bit just about our population, and I think I shared this at the spotlight, but that is how Oceanview students break down demographically. So a majority Asian, Latinx, and white mostly. We have 27% English learners with over 22 languages spoken, and we're currently at about 40% socioeconomically disadvantaged. So the SIPSA should be aligned to the LCAP, and so that's what we did a little bit of revamping of our SIPSA's this year. As I came in and read the old one, so I restructured it a little bit, and you'll see that as we move through it. But so the first, our first LCAP goal, of course, is about providing a comprehensive educational experience with expanded opportunities for engagement, assessment, and academic growth so that all students will achieve to their fullest potential. So I took that goal and said, okay, for Oceanview, here's what we're trying to achieve. For subgroups at Oceanview showing a significant achievement gap between the subgroup's academic performance and then the overall student academic performance, the percentage of students for that targeted subgroup, the identified targeted subgroups, achieving at or above will increase by at least five percentage points. And then also that we will maintain or increase the overall percentage of students scoring at or above grade level. So the identified need, so what we saw this year was due to the COVID-19 pandemic, schools did not participate in state testing in 20 or 21. So we had to go back a couple of years for some of our big state data. So in the 2020, 2020, and 2021, and 2021, 22 school years, we began to use new local assessment system called FastBridge, which was great because that gave us more local data. FastBridge data shows an overall high percentage for Oceanview Elementary. We know that. However, the data also reveals an achievement gap in performance for some of our subgroups. So in English Language Arts, those subgroups include Latinx students, socioeconomically disadvantaged, and students with a disability. And then in math, we see the data to reveal an achievement gap with Latinx, Black, African-American, and socioeconomically disadvantaged English learners, and then students with disabilities. Again, those groups are performing below our all-other-group category. So this is the data that we decided to use in our SIPSA. There's quite a bit here, and one thing I want to note is that the CASP data or the state data are also known as the Sback data. We had to go back to 2019 because, again, we didn't take these assessments in 20 or 21. So the way that they do it for CASP is they do the distance. It's considered that it measures how far from the lowest possible standard met the group is performing. So you're going to see points above standard as our indicator here, our metric here. And then the FastBridge is different, so I'll get into that in a minute. So in 2019, all of our students were performing 50.2% or points above the standard, which is really great if you look at that, right? And then our socioeconomically disadvantaged were only 0.8 points above the standard. So that's a group that I wanted to target for this purpose using the CASP. For the expected outcome, we're saying that the points above standard will remain the same or increase. And then for all students, and then for our identified subgroup, which in this case is socioeconomically disadvantaged, will increase by five percentage points. Now, when you look at CASP data, one of the problems is that you're not going to see the groups broken down because we don't have enough representation in certain subgroups. So that's why it's not as focused as the FastBridge data is. So for math, we did see, we saw 34.35.4 points above standard for all students. And then socioeconomically disadvantaged were 18.4 points below standard, and Latinx were 1.7 points below standards. And then also remember, this is two, three years ago, three years ago. So we had kind of set the same, and we are supposed to use CASP data, so I wanted to include that in the SIPSA. And then we are taking the CASP this year, so it'll be very interesting to see how we pan out this year. So same thing, we're going to increase the percentage of students performing at or above. We hope to remain the same or increase. And then for identified subgroups, we're set the goal of increasing at about five percentage points. So FastBridge, we're measuring a little bit differently. We're looking at the percentage of students at or above grade level. So in T1 2021, so that's this school year, trimester one. I'm using that as a baseline and then setting goals around that. So we did see that our students overall were 71.56 at or above. And then our subgroups Latinx were less, you know, 10 percentage points less, 61. And then low socioeconomic was at 64.36, and our students with disabilities were at 46.15. So those are our three focus groups. The goal is for all students to keep it either forming, either increase or remain the same. And then for those identified subgroups, to try to increase those percentages by five percentage points. Math, we're seeing all students at 74.48. And then we're seeing our Black students at 53.84%, our Latinx at 54.45%, our ELs. We have a lot more identified groups in this one. Our ELs are 61.34, our so low socioeconomic are 63, students with disability 60. So it's the same goal that we're going to want to remain or increase all students, and then we're going to want to increase each of our subgroups by at least five percentage points. The next category is our English learner progress indicator. So that measures, that's on the dashboard, and it measures how far from the lowest possible area of, or no, I'm sorry, that's wrong. The English language, the ELPI, is, it measures how many students are maintaining their LPAC score or scoring higher. This is really complicated, but what we wanted, what we're basically looking at is how many students stayed the same or got higher, and then how many students actually decreased. So we had 70.7% were making progress towards English language proficiency. So but, but the alarming thing was that 12% of ELs decreased by at least one level. So that's what we really want to target there. And then 17% of our ELs maintained their level. And then 20, that these last two percentages are a combination of that 70. So that's the 24 who maintained and the 46 who progressed. So our goal is to increase those percentages. We are saying that we'd like to increase to 75% of our English learners making progress. And then the percentage who decrease will lessen, and from 29 to 20, and then the percent of who maintain will remain the same more or less. And then the present that will progress, that will progress will increase to 54%. It's a lot of very detailed information. So an analysis of what happened from our last SIPSA is that during this school year 2021, we were still in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we were, we were able to return in person, which was great. But our students were required to wear masks throughout the day, eat outdoors, have regular COVID-19 testing, and were forced to cancel. We were forced to cancel many events and gatherings that we would hold in a normal school year. The good news was that we were back to school in person, which meant that we were able to resume our full-day schedule. We continued to hold SST meetings, which are a very important piece of this. We held IEP meetings, we held 504 meetings, and we did those either on Zoom or in person. We were also able to conduct all our FastBridge assessments, which was a huge victory. That helped to track our student performance levels, and we looked at, we were able to look at that data throughout the year. And we were also successful in using that data to track our reading performance and target subgroups and to serve our students through interventions or, you know, increased academic supports in the classroom. So now I'm going to go into all the strategies that we do in school to support goal one, which is basically academics, right? So one of, I'm just going to kind of quickly read through these. They're in the SIPSA. They're much more detailed. But you know, that would take a long time. So the first goal is based on high-quality teachers with a goal of diversifying our staff. So we have all, as administrators, made a commitment to really intentionally trying to diversify our staffs. I just want to highlight that. Also, providing the Common Core State Standards-aligned curriculum, which we have, and also aligning our instruction with the content standards. Goal, our strategy three is to provide curriculum for differentiated instruction, including digital platforms and culturally responsive materials. We have purchased extra, what's called SIPs, which is an Orton-Gillingham-type reading intervention program at our school. Provide systems for assessing student, that would be FastBridge, three times a year. That's new. Using a variety of our local assessments. We use beyond FastBridge, but what we record and and present on is FastBridge, but we have a lot of other local assessments. Goal, strategy five is reviewing and analyzing our assessment data. That's something that's really a big goal for us. So FastBridge was new, and we're hoping to have more time to really dive into the data and learn more about it to determine need, to identify target students, develop strategies, et cetera. Our goal, our strategy six is to provide regular professional development in focused on curriculum instruction, on UDL, on the science of reading, anti-racist teaching, et cetera. These are all things we did this year, which is really something to celebrate, and I'm hoping that we can continue kind of diving deeper into these categories. Strategy seven is to provide opportunities for teachers to partner in weekly collaborative discussions. So they do have collaboration time weekly, and just to continue and improve on that. Strategy eight is to provide release collaboration times, days. This was hard to do this year, but I want to, I want to make sure that we are doing that, and those are opportunities for a grade level to get together and really focus on the data and to plan instruction, discuss pacing, and to align their practices. Strategy nine is to provide technology to students. So we were really happy to get this year at Oceanview, we were able to get iPads, Chromebooks, the one-on-one, and then also to provide PD support in technology for teachers. Goal or strategy 10 is our student study team. We did that. We were able to do that this year. We're going to continue to do it next year. We, these are great opportunities. We do them every single week, and we meet with families. And it might be, it's like a support system for families. And we get to focus on improving, setting goals to improve academic or behavioral outcomes. Strategy 11 is provide reading intervention service. So we do have intervention teachers, and they do do pull-out or push-in services. And that we want to, we're actually going to get a little bit of an increase in that at Oceanview next year, which we're super excited about. We would like to beef up our math support. So we do have monies that come in, funds that come in through school care, and we do after, after-school tutoring mostly or math club. We're going to continue that and hoping to increase, increase into some of our daytime math support, too. Strategy 13 is to provide English language development services for students and pull-out or push-in. We do that. And those are all our strategies for goal one. So I don't know if we want to just keep going through this because I have a lot more. Or if we want to take any breaks, do we want to just keep going? Okay, okay. So goal two is the LCAP goal, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, is to foster social and emotional growth for all students, right? So at Oceanview, we will provide, our goal is to provide a safe, engaging environment, which values inclusion, equity, and a positive school climate for all students and staff. We'll support our school community by broadening social, cultural, and racial understanding through the integration of the district's social-emotional learning curricula and the social justice competencies. We'll identify individual social-emotional and behavioral needs and apply collaborative approach, appropriate interventions based on current research and best practices. Okay, so our identified need. As we moved into this new school facility after being in temporary housing and experiencing the pandemic for two years, the need for all students and staff to feel connected to school and each other was vitally important and remains important. There's a critical need to develop and review routines, safety protocols, and to build, enhance, and adapt a community infrastructure aligned to our current needs. We also must continue to address the lingering effects of distance learning and the social-emotional impact of both being out of school for a prolonged period of time and of attending school during a pandemic. Due to the pandemic, chronic absenteeism through this school year 2020, 2122 has increased pretty dramatically. We've also seen a large demand for student counseling and our attendance and social-emotional need. We're hoping that our attendance and our social-emotional needs will be a focus for the next school year. And that's what our SIPSA is, this goal in particulars is targeting. So as metrics for this goal, we're looking at the Healthy Kids Survey. We have some old data on this. New data just came in, and I wasn't able to include that in the SIPSA because it's brand-new to this year. But we'll use that to evaluate as we, as we start our SIPSA's next year. So the California Healthy Kids Survey, that's given to fifth graders. We're using the baseline that 77% of our students felt a strong school connectedness, and we're hoping to increase that by five percentage points. We also do a staff survey, and for all, I only had the data for all elementary teachers. But we will and do currently, just as of a couple of days ago, have data on our particular elementary school. So we'll be including that in our future SIPSA. But so district-wide, we, the amount of teachers who strongly agreed that they had a positive working environment and that 57% of teachers said that, and 62% felt that school was a safe space for staff. So we're hoping to increase that by 5% each of those questions in the survey. Attendance data. So I decided to go back to 1819 for attendance data because our attendance data has been kind of wonky these past couple of years. We have, you know, encouraged families to quarantine, and so that has, has had an effect on our absenteeism rate. And so looking back on 1819, we had an overall absenteeism of 9.8%. And then I looked at subgroups, and I saw that students with disability had a higher absenteeism rate of 12.1, and our socioeconomically disadvantaged had 14%. So the dashboard doesn't have current absenteeism rate information. So we can't look at that as on the dashboard. We have our Aries data, and it's looking a lot higher right now. We're looking at like 20%. But that, again, is due to the pandemic. So I'm hoping that as we get back next year and we improve some of our methods for getting families to be at school, and hopefully the pandemic isn't having a huge influence on us at that point, then we can increase this absent, or decrease this absenteeism, chronic absenteeism rate for all groups by at least three percentage points. That's what I put there. Suspension rate, we had a very low suspension rate originally, so our goal is to maintain or decrease that. So an analysis of our successes over this last year, the area of the SIPSA. So this is what I talked about revising the SIPSA, is that this, this area used to be in goal three. I moved it to goal two to align to the LCAP. It's, it, due to the pandemic, many of our strategies pertaining to school climate could not be implemented. We weren't able to gather for assemblies, hold events. We didn't have back-to-school night. Oh, I have in here open house, but we did end up having an open house, so I wrote this prayer. After over a year of distance learning or partial in-person learning, many of our programs were dismantled. We did not have student council. We didn't have conflict managers or other student committees. We were still constantly monitoring the pandemic and changing regulations regarding meeting in person, masking, COVID testing, et cetera. However, the positive note, during this school, we were able to develop a new behavior matrix that aligned to our new school, our new campus, and we also revamped our positive reward system. We held a lot of student study team meetings, and we successfully met and communicated with parents through Zoom. So the new platform of Zoom has been really helpful, and I could see that going into the future years because we found that we had a higher participation rate with that. So these are the strategies to support goal two, climate. Regularly administering the California Healthy Kids Survey, fifth grade to fifth grade students. Strategy two is for staff to be given curricula and tools to provide instruction in areas of positive behavioral support, social-emotional learning, anti-bias instruction, and teaching tolerance. Continuing mental health services, our counseling services, which we're really lucky to have through the district intern, the counseling intern program for small groups and focus, for focus groups and for individual students. To, strategy four is to provide lessons from the Child Help Speak Up Be Safe, which we have been doing in our district. Strategy five is for fifth-grade students to receive a week of puberty education. Again, we've been doing that. Strategy six is to maintain a school-wide positive behavior and intervention system with our behavior matrix. And then also, one of my goals, because this was dismantled here at Oceanview, my goal is to recreate a PBIS team. Strategy seven is to provide our bicycle safety program. Strategy eight is to renew our school-wide student council leadership, which we dismantled this year and clearly wasn't in operation the past two years. So we'll bring that back. We want to bring back our sing-along assemblies. We want to bring, we will, we want to provide extracurricular activities, games, and art activities in the library during lunch, new-time sports, et cetera. We did, we did bring those back. We had a hard time with staffing this year, and I think that was part of the pandemic. It was hard to get Y staff here. So hopefully that'll improve next year. The student, strategy 11 is our student study team and to regularly meet with targeted families, help develop strategies, just like we have been doing in the past. Strategy 12 is to provide a comprehensive safety plan and to consistently improve our safety plan. Hoping to just really beef up our teams and get Hoping to just really beef up our teams and, and get that going a little better with our new site particularly. Strategy 13 is to monitor respond to student absences. So this is a really big one. Bringing back the SART and SARB process. We didn't, we, we didn't do much of that this year because again of the kind of like absence forgiveness we did. Strategy 14 is to offer summer school programming in, which we're doing this year in social emotional learning, ELD, bridge, and our resource program. And then strategy 15 is staff provided access to mental health support program. That's new this year. We're really happy to have that. And yeah, that's it for goal two. And I'm going to move right into goal three. Goal three, our LCAP goal three is all about communication. So I revised our SIPSA to have our, our school site focused to be on communication as well. So our, our parallel sort of, if you will, Ocean View goal three around communication is that we will communicate and collaborate with parents and guardians on a regular basis, conducting outreach to ensure we have accurate information and providing easy to use methods for communication with families. We'll provide opportunities for parents or guardians to be informed about their students' academic progress by providing assessment results, report cards, and holding parent teacher conferences. We will recruit parents, specifically those who represent our diverse community to participate onsite in district committees. Parents will be invited and encouraged to volunteer at school and in classroom. We did have parent volunteers this year, but not nearly to the extent that we'd like to get back to. So we're hoping to increase that. So our identified need is that parents and teachers are the most important contributors to our students' educational success. With strong communication, they're able to support students' learning together, leading to positive student outcomes. We know that, the data shows that. We value the diverse voices of our stakeholders and seek to include differing perspectives when making decisions that impact staff, students, and community. So during distance learning, it was imperative to identify new systems for communication since students and families were not entering campus. One of the positive outcomes of the pandemic was an increased use of technology by teachers and families. Recent technological advances enabled teachers to communicate with parents on a more regular basis in a more efficient manner. Teachers can use email, text, video platforms to communicate with parents and schedule meetings and conferences. One of the unfortunate outcomes of the pandemic was that the subgroup of our students and families had limited or almost no participation in schooling with families, sometimes excluding themselves during this time. Moving forward, we'll need to continue increased outreach to families to encourage school engagement. So we did see a very big drop off in this area. Again, I talked a lot about absenteeism, but we also, because parents weren't coming on campus as much, we felt like we lost a lot of our community. And so we need to sort of rebuild that community and we have some plans for that. So the metrics we'll use is, I'm, I'm looking at some of the metrics that, that there's some data in, in parent square that we could look at participation rates. I want to delve a little bit deeper into that, but it says that 99.3% of our students' families are contactable, which is great. I would like to increase still yet because I think some of our emails are wrong or, or some of our, maybe we have one parent but not another. So we want to work on really solidifying that system. We have 596 contactable parents. And I'm, I'm sorry, we have 596 students in Ocean View and 923 contactable parents, which sounds great. But I still think that, I think that that can improve with cleaning up, again, cleaning up the, the emails and outreach and a little bit more to get parents having their, their information in the system. So then the California Parent Schools Parent Survey, that's a component of the Healthy Kids Survey. There's the parent piece. And so I don't have the data on that right now. We just received it for this year. We, we weren't able to get previous years. So I don't have a baseline on that. But we'll establish a new baseline for the following, for, for this, the data we're looking at right now and then set a goal around increasing that. For the, our language, so, so we meet in and do our ELAC meetings, right? English Language Advisory Committee meetings. We noticed a huge drop off since the pandemic. We only had, so I looked at the data from our first meeting for this year, which was all on Zoom, and we only had two parents attending. So the goal next year is to increase that by at least five. I'd like to see a really ro- robust ELAC. So hopefully we can really outdo that. So the analysis of the previous SIPSA related to this new SIPSA, I couldn't put information in here because this was not a previous goal in the SIPSA. So like I said, we kind of revised all our, we, well, all of us together, we all revised our SIPSA's. And so now being more aligned with the LCAP goals, this isn't something that we can report on, which is okay, because we'll do that next year. Strategies related to this goal. Strategy one is that families will be regularly communicated with and informed about school policies and procedures through class and school newsletters, parent handbook, back to school night, and other methods. Strategy two is parent education events. To continue to hold those, we've had some great ones this year and to increase or, or continue holding them. Strategy three is to communicate to parents about opportunities to attend or participate in school events and to volunteer in classrooms, to volunteer at lunch, as lunch supervisors or help in the library. So that was volunteering for lunch supervision was a little bit, was more successful this year because parents were able to come and be in an outdoor setting. That was doable for this year. So I'm really hoping to increase getting parents on campus to volunteer. Strategy four is to recruit parents to participate as members on school and district committees, school site council, ELAC, PTA, budget advisory committee, student achievement committee, and pri- prioritizing recruitment of parents who represent our diverse student populations. So I just want to add that our site council was fabulous this year. We had students of, we had parents who represented our diverse population. They gave us really, really great input this year that I used in my SIPSA. They really had a lot to say about parent communication. So I found that to be super helpful this year. We just wrapped up all, all our meetings and we met, we met monthly. Strategy five is parent teacher conferences. We, we are doing those. We do those. We hold them twice yearly. It's great now that we, we offer them in both Zoom and in person and that really helped parents to, to increase attendance. Strategy six was, is that English learners will be encouraged to attend ELAC, just like I touched on that before. Strategy seven is to provide translators for parents attending parent teacher conferences, IEP meetings, or other meet, any other meetings. Strategy eight is to communicate with families regarding their students' progress and make assessment data, including FastBridge readily available. So this was a really big ask from my site council. They wanted, they really wanted access to that FastBridge data and they wanted it in a timely manner. So I think that's a good goal for, for all of us to set. And I know last year, I think some of it had to do with just data, I mean, technology is issues. And so I'm hoping that this coming year, that'll be really successful. Strategy nine is to administer the school parents survey. We did that this year. It's great. Strategy 10 is to have an instructional leadership team, ILT, which we do every year. And that's a, that's an opportunity. We have representatives from each grade level and they meet month, meet monthly, or I'm sorry, every other week with me. And we, we mostly talk about logistics of the school and I'm hoping to make that more of a truly instructional team and to be able to bring back the information we're doing to, back to all our teachers in collaboration time. So that is it for the strategies for goal three. And then just to summarize and to, to wrap up my section, what are our next steps at Ocean View? We would like to increase opportunities for teachers to review data and use that data to inform instruction. I, I touched on that previously. We got all this great new FastBridge data and we want to have more opportunities during our staff meeting to really dive, do some data dives into this, this FastBridge data. We want to form a coordination of services team. So we don't have this at Ocean View. I had it in my previous district where we have what's called a cost team. And the team gets together and they work on really tracking data on our, our students who are performing below grade level and developing strategies to improve performance. And that can be both behaviorally and academically. So that's what I want to create for next, next year. Re- resuming our SART and SARB pro- system to assist families whose students are chronically absent. And so I'm hoping that we can, you know, bring back the letters and meeting with parents and, and hopefully having a district SARB. And then another goal is to resume welcoming of families on our campus for volunteer opportunities, parent teacher conferences, and to attend community events. And that wraps it up for Ocean View.
Can I ask that we table all the questions until we get to do all three of the presentation? Thank you.
Oops. Sorry. Okay. Next up is Liz.
Hi. Thank you so much, Michelle. I really appreciate, I really appreciate you helping us with your understanding of creating a SIPSA that aligns with the LCAP. That really helped me this year do a, what I think is a much better job and a more succinct SIPSA. So thank you for that. And also thank you for going first because you have covered much of, since we are in alignment, covered much and explained much about the metrics. And so now I'll be able to talk about what is different for Cornell and point out what is the same. So the Cornell, and, and hi everyone on the board and who is here or at the district office. I invite you to turn your videos on if you want to. I enjoy having Zoom meetings where I can see people. If you can't do that, I understand, but I'm just putting that out there. That, that helps me with engagement and interaction. So thank you if you are able to do that. The Cornell vision and mission, this is from our previous SIPSA to be cooperative, respectful, responsible lifelong learners and to align with the district's mission and values by creating a safe and important and supportive learning environment, valuing the diversity of our population and targeting our work to ensure students' success at their grade level, develop critical thinking skills, produce high-quality work, and be adept at applying their learning and are thoughtful, caring members of our community. Next slide. The Cornell population, this is the 2122 data. And I want to point out that in some of this, this, the SIPSA was tricky this year because the data was sometimes available and sometimes not. So we have data going all the way back to 2018 and all the way up to 2022. So there's a huge range. Whenever I, I could find the current, the most current data, I used it. And other times we weren't able to, to have it. So that's been, was a little tricky and was tricky, I have to say, for the site council. The parents had a lot of questions about, about that. So it was a little tricky to, to work with that. And that's just an outcome of the pandemic, right? So, but this data is current. We have about 547 students and our English learner population is 18, our seven, 17% are socioeconomically disadvantaged. Nine are students with, 9% are students with disabilities. Our largest ethnic group is almost 30% Asian, 20% white. We do have, similar to Ocean View, we have about 15% of the families who declined to state. And we have about 15% with two or more races and 15% Hispanic or Latinx. And then a very small percentage, 1.5 Black or African American and 1.1 Filipino. Next, please. So our LCAP goal one is the same and our SIPSA goal one is the same to achieve in academically. Next, the same as Ocean View. Next slide. The identified need is very much the same. And we did have some, the similar, similar data in terms of our subgroups and their scores. I did list that the Black, under the English Language Arts, that Black and African American students scored closer to the overall scores but still revealed a gap. It wasn't a 10% gap, but the members of my site council felt it was important that I pointed it out anyway. And I, and I have, everything else is pretty much very similar to Ocean View in terms of the needs. On the metrics, next slide. So the metrics we're using are similar for the, the, the 2019 SPAC data. And the, the, both in ELA and math, the numbers are a little bit different. We have all students scoring 77.6 above standard and the low socioeconomically disadvantaged are 50% above standard. We have the same goals of maintaining or increasing by five percentage points. And the same is the case in math as the expected goal. The numbers are a little bit different, 54% above standard for all students and 23% above standards for socioeconomic disadvantaged. Here under FastBridge literacy, I did include the, we have all students 82% at or above standard. And then the subgroups, the more significant gaps are for the Latinx students at 57, 56 for socioeconomically disadvantaged. Students with disabilities are at 59% at and above. And then our, our Black and African American students are 75% at and above, which is very close to the all-student number. But again, the site council wanted me to include that there, even though it doesn't show as much of a gap. For math, there is a greater gap. We have 82% at and above for all students, Black and African American, Latinx, low socioeconomic are all at 62, 64, 63, and students with disabilities at 61. So pretty significant and noticeable gaps in, 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 um, performance on the FastBridge for fall. And our English learners, our, our English learning, ELPI indicators are similar. We have, but not exactly, we have 10% of ELS that decreased one ELPI level. We have 70% that have maintained or progressed the 30 plus the 40. So we're trying to bring that, those numbers up by 35% or down by 10%. That's, those are complicated numbers there. Okay, moving on, under successes and challenges, very much the same. We did one differences in paragraph two. We did a lot. We actually did have most of our meetings on Zoom. Some, we also had our staff and our professional development and our instructional leadership team meetings. We're also on Zoom. The, we didn't have as many in-person meetings as the other, as Ocean View did. And I don't think as, as Marin. So our site was more comfortable staying on Zoom as in our groups, meetings. And in terms of our data and our, our, the reorganization of the SIPSA, which basically meant that both math and ELA were reported in goal one. Whereas previously, we had two different goals, one for ELA and one for math. Next slide. So our strategies are the same. And I think it's really wonderful that, that they're the same. That means that we are in alignment with each other, the three principles. We work together all the time and we pay attention to what each other are doing. We're like our, we're, we know that collaboration supports, when teachers collaborate, student achievement goes up. And it's so wonderful that in this small district, when the principals collaborate, I think our outcomes are improved. And so all of our strategies are, are the same for the one through eight. We do have some differences though on the next slide. And that's because Cornell is also a unique school, not the same as Ocean View and not the same as Marin. and not the same as Marin. Goal, strategy nine, provide technology to students TK through first iPads and second through fifth Chromebooks. So that is a goal that we have, that is not, we have not achieved that yet, mainly because that will be coming next year as Marin gets the new technology through their, through their, what word am I using? Their bonds and their re, their new facility. We will also be thankfully be get, be getting iPads K through first. I should change that. It is not TK through first, it's K through first. I have that changed in the actual item. And we are looking forward to having Chromebooks for second grade. We do, of course, have Chromebooks third through fifth. I like the other schools do at this time. On goal, strategy 10, we already have developed a cost, a coordination of services team. It was our pilot year for that. And we've been doing it. And so the way I think of it is the student study team includes the parents and the coordination of services team is really just the team at the site and can be, and can, isn't always just academic or, or social emotional concerns. It can be other problems that we have and other things that we need to attend to. But we're doing it and it seems to be really effective. I think it's making, helping us help, it's, it's helping us do less meetings overall because we're able to strategize together first, come up with solutions. So we don't need to have as many of the other student study or IP meetings. 11, 12, and 13 are the same. That's the reading intervention, the math intervention and the ELD. I did include summer school here. Oh, and you have that here too as, no, I'm sorry. So Michelle put summer school into her communication piece. I put it here. Both, basically, we have the same program. I think it could go either place or maybe both. So she, I mean, she put it in goal two. I think it could go in both. I might, I can make a case for either place. We are doing a lot of social emotional learning in summer school this year. So I think that's why you put it in goal two. And then there's two areas that I have, that I have and has been a tradition to have additional support. And I'm calling these the CASP Assessment Support Coordinator and the LPAC Assessment Support. These are qualified substitute teachers hired to support the large amount of students that we have taking the CASP for either their, their separate settings. If they have IEPs for their makeup tests and to support, we had so many LPAC tests this year. So that's additional, additional support staff hired to support me and the other teachers, the resource teachers, the special ed department, and the ELD coordinator to get these tests done in a timely manner, to make sure all students have the appropriate setting and to, to maximize the amount of time that the, the resource teacher and the ELD coordinator are not having to cancel groups because they're doing the testing, right? So at a certain point, we can shift it over and have the, the substitute days. It's about, about eight to 10 substitute days for each area. LCAP goal number two, great, is the same and the SIPSA goal is the same for Cornell, very, very similar as Ocean View. Next slide. The identified need is much the same coming out of the pandemic. We have a different, one of the, one of the things that will be different for Cornell is that we are going to have our yard rebuilt this summer and next summer. And that's going to change, are going to require renewed focus on all of our protocols and our positive behavior systems because we're going to be in a new environment. And we really need to, we're going to start, actually, we're going to start next, on June 6th and 7th, we're going to be spending some time looking at our peaceful playground handbook and some of the things that we have done, that we had in place in terms of behavior matrix and, and PBIS prior to the pandemic. We're, we're going to bring out dust off, revise and teach explicitly. Next slide, in terms of the metrics. The California Healthy Kids Survey, this listed here and what the site council saw was the data from 1920. I was able to take a look at the newer data, the 2122 data. And in terms of school connectedness, for both the students, I was disappointed to see for 2122, I'm not surprised, though, connectedness went down to 71% from 82%. So that is a drop of 11% of the students feeling connected to school. And I'm not surprised they were in distance learning and now we're back. So that's a really big area for us to focus on. And feeling safe at school went down a little bit. It went from 91 to 87. So our goal of increasing both of those back up is great. Interestingly enough, when we pull out the staff, the staff numbers from, this is, if you recall, this is what's, what's here is the elementary teachers district wide. When I pulled out Cornell, I had 100% of the teachers who responded saying that they felt it was a positive environment and 100% of them saying that they felt it was a safe place. So that was interesting. And I don't know what they responded in 1920, but that's what they, what I have here for them in 2122. So in terms of the absenteeism, absenteeism rate is low, very low at Cornell. It was from 1819, it was only about 3%. And for lower socioeconomic, it was about 4%. I wanted some more updated data, so I kind of dug into ADA. I don't know if that's really, average daily attendance is actually considered a metric that you could use for attendance, but I did anyway. And I did 18, I pulled out 1819, 1920, 2021, which, you know, it was COVID online learning. So our, our methods were, were a little wacky, like, were you on Zoom? Did you have your camera on? Were you turning in your assignments? So I don't think that's very, very accurate. August through April year to date this year, it is down to 96. So the goal would be to bring up ADA to the pre-pandemic rate of, of 1819 or, or even 1920. So that's a goal there. Suspension rate is not so great at Cornell. We were much higher than, quite a bit higher, I would say, than Ocean View. We had 1.4% in 1920. And I would like to focus on decreasing that and utilizing some of the strategies that the middle school has been using in terms of their positive behavior sort of justice matrix. I really want to learn more about that. And then one other metric that I took that was different was mental, how, mental health counseling referrals. We've been paying a lot of attention to how many kids have been referred for mental health counseling. 55% in 2021, I mean, 55 students in 2021 were referred for mental health counseling at Cornell. And this year, 70 students, and those are not the same students. I want to increase, this was really debated by my site council because they said, well, you don't necessarily want to decrease the referrals, right? You want kids to be referred who need to be referred. So I tried to write it so that it would reflect what we meant, which, which was to decrease the need for counseling referrals by 10%. So if we, assuming that if we saw less students referred, but we were still as vigilant at reporting who needed counseling, then we would assume that the environment was better and that the children's mental health was doing better. That'll be interesting to see how that can be compared. Okay, next slide, please. The analysis of the successes, challenges and changes. Very similar to Ocean View at the beginning there. The second one having to do with coming back to person, in-person. We did have some in-person assemblies at Cornell. We had two community times. We used to do one a month. We, we were able to do two. And we're having a spring assembly and I think many people are invited. It's tomorrow morning. And that's an in-person assembly. And we were able to do back-to-school night as the other schools were. So we, we ventured forth on the outdoor assemblies, mainly because I like assemblies and community times and they made me feel good. So I did them at least two. And then another difference was in, we did some, we did not have a student council or a book fair, but we did have conflict managers. We started our conflict manager program in January. So we did some of our programs that support students in their social emotional learning. And we still need to work on our, as I mentioned, working on our PBIS program. That's going to be a focus for us next year. Great. Okay, strategies and activities for goal two. All of these one through seven are very much this, I mean, one through six are the same as Ocean View. And seven is different. I mentioned the school-wide expectations and the peaceful playground handbook that we're going to be revisiting and revising and making fit with our yard. So that's a different strategy that we have at Cornell. And next slide. We are also going to try and renew our student leadership council. We don't have one. And again, we are already starting some of our community times. We've already been doing some art on the yard, crafts, library times, and we want to increase those. And we have a cost team already in place that we're going to continue with. So those are a little bit different. Our safety plan is the same goal. And we have our bike to safety week as well. But we're also going to try to look, our site council wanted us to explore adding the pedestrian safety week at Cornell, which we didn't do last year. So we're going to look into that. And that's the strategies and how they differ at Ocean View. Next slide, goal three, LCAP goal is the same, Cornell SIPSA goal is the same. And one difference, however, is that we have been, we have been having some volunteers on campus and we are, I, I listed that the staff, I, I put it here about the instructional leadership team. So that's similar to Ocean View in terms of their goals and that we've started, we did start some of that. It's really interesting that our staff didn't want to meet in person. They wanted to stay on Zoom and yet they were willing to be outside in activities and do other things like that. So it's really a lot, just the culture and the feeling of your staff and your community that can make a difference in how things work out. Identified needs all pretty much the same in terms of getting people involved, how important it is. And then our, our metrics are a little bit different. I looked at parent volunteers. I did, I did not look at this, at parent square contactability as Ocean View did. I counted that I had 38 parents approved with volunteer one forms and 116 parents approved with volunteer two forms. And I would like to maintain or increase the number of approved parent volunteers in 2122. We have had people in the classroom, they had to prove that they were vaccinated in addition to filling out their volunteer forms. The same is our ELAC participation. We really, my ELD coordinator was, felt very strongly that we increased that. We did have 15 English learner families attend the September ELAC meeting and we'd like to increase that by at least five. And then I got a little creative on this metric. I decided to look at parent survey response rate. I took the parent intent to return survey and I checked how many parents responded within the first seven days and didn't have to be called and invited to respond or asked independently. At 32% of my families responded in the first seven days, that was 192 out of 609. I'd like to increase response time by 50% and get 50% of the fam, I'm sorry, to 50%, get 50% of the families to respond in the first seven days. I'm not sure how I'm going to do that, but we'll see. If they're more engaged, maybe they'll respond faster. And again, I don't have the parent survey, the, the California Healthy Kids or the CSSS parent survey. And that's the same as Ocean View. What we will do, that we will have that for next year. And this is the same also, the next slide, please, the analysis, the successes and the challenges. This is a new goal. This is a new goal for the SIPSA. So, and the, and the metrics are also new. So we'll have some comparison next year. And then finally, the strategies. The strategies are for goal three are all very much the same, one through five, next slide. And I did add in 11, the student progress communication, provide parents of students with disabilities with information about their students' progress on IEP goals through annual IEP meetings and progress reports each trimester. That isn't unique to Cornell. Ocean View and Marin do that too. I just put it in here. And then continue to work in, number 12, continue to work in collaboration with the Cornell PTA to support and encourage community building and fundraising efforts. These include the Care to Call Campaign, Cornell's Got Talent Coyote Fund Fitness Week and Teacher Appreciation Events. I had, the, the PTA was extremely active at Cornell this year. One of the most active PTAs I've, I've ever worked with, not just as a teacher, but when I was a parent working on PTAs, I was, they, they were amazing. I have to shout out to them. And then I threw this one in just the other day. Nobody on my site council or my staff saw it. But I got excited. Every time I drive by Ocean View, I see their digital marquee. And I always know what's going on there. And I thought to myself, wait a second, that supports, that would support goal three. And I want to do that. So I threw it in there and I hope that I'm going to investigate the cost. I was a little surprised when I started Googling how much those things cost. I don't know if I can do it, but it'd be great if we could have a digital marquee too, so that everybody who drives by will know when grad promotion ceremony is or what vacation is coming up. And I imagine that Marin might be already having a digital marquee too, are you? Oh yeah, if you're having one too, I definitely need one. Okay. And oh, Cornell, next steps, let us not forget. So my next steps are similar in analyzing assessment data three times a year and creating frequent and robust opportunities for in-person community building. Those are two of my next steps, but I have two different ones. I really would like to incorporate more stakeholders into the development of the 2324 SIPSA and have a protocol and an emphasis for evaluating the project, the progress on the metrics. This one was actually pointed out and brought up by my site council. And I didn't get as, I didn't have as much time to, to run my SIPSA by other groups. And so that is a goal for Cornell. And then the other one is folk, I'd like to focus on the special education report strategies that were outlined in the May 10th, 2022 school board meeting, including MTSS and universal design for learning. And that is also not unique to Cornell. It's just that I wrote it down here. Okay, thank you all for listening.
Thank you. I, I just want to interrupt to say two things. One, I would also appreciate it if our board members could have their cameras on. For one thing, I'm a little uncertain as to whether we have a quorum here.
I'm here. My kids are just running around like crazy, so I turned it on. I apologize.
Great. So the other thing is that we only have 17. We only have 17 minutes left and I want to make sure we have time for the board to answer questions. So, or ask questions. So We only have seventeen minutes left, and I want to make sure we have time for the board to answer questions. So or ask questions. So just maybe the Marin report could focus kind of like Principal Ryan Mueller did, just on what what's different or or what, in particular, I think the last piece about next steps. Yeah, trustee Das.
Yeah, so there were. I appreciate the presentations. I also really like seeing everybody, too, and having a camera on, but this meeting was scheduled really early in the day, and so some of us just haven't gotten off work yet. Some people are at work and they're able to have their camera on because this is their full-time gig. So as soon as I'm off, I will turn my camera on, but it's not intentional just to not participate. But we're multitasking because this meeting started at four o'clock. So it's just really early. So I appreciate it. But I mean, we're doing the best we can, but really enjoy seeing everybody and presentations have been great so far. Thanks.
Thank you for clarifying that, trustee Das. I I do appreciate that and appreciate your multitasking. Thank you.
Well, I actually also just want to say in the future, board members should not, in fact, be multitasking. So we should make sure we're scheduling these for a time when when that's not happening. So we'll correct that in the future. All right. So go ahead, principal. Where are you? Principal fool. There you are. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, and I appreciate the time and everybody's everybody being here today to listen to our presentations. And yes, I'm I'm aware of the time, too. I'll I'll zip through the Marin piece. I think the couple, a couple of the highlights that I, actually, I'll get to my highlights are a vision and mission you can read. It's in the it's in the packet. So next slide, please. Our, thank you, our Marin population, I just want to mention, has changed over the years. I've been watching it since I became principal. And as a teacher, it seemed when I was there as a teacher, it seemed very consistent. It's definitely changing. It's becoming far more diverse than it than it was when I initially started at Marin, which is a wonderful thing. I love to see that. And these are our current numbers for this year. Our largest population is is still our white population, but but at twenty nine point four percent, we've seen increases over these last couple of years, especially in our African American population and our Latinx population. We have thirteen percent of our students as English language learners and twenty four percent socioeconomically disadvantaged. Next slide, please. So the L cap goal is the same as what my colleagues have said, and the Marin SIPs a goal one is the same as as my colleagues have said. So next slide, please. Our identified need is similar to where, to what you've heard previously. We want, we have an overall high performance rate at Marin Elementary. However, we do have achievement gaps with our Black African American students, our Latinx students, our socioeconomically disadvantaged and students with disabilities in both reading and math, and we are working hard to close those gaps. Next slide. So this is the data of where we're at. Yeah, the the where we started at the top here was the CASP data. It's a little frustrating that that data is a couple few years old at this point, but our numbers are there. What really is the meat of this, in my opinion, is our FastBridge data, because that is from the fall of this year. T one, I'm pleased to report that all of our students were performing seventy one point fifty six percent above average in reading. And and our Latinx population sixty one point thirty two percent points above average, actually. And you know what? Sorry to say this, but this is wrong. I'm going to need to correct these numbers. I corrected them in the slideshow, but it clearly, Michelle must be working from the PDF. So I am going to go ahead and correct these numbers, and I'm going to try and make this as easy on everybody as possible. I apologize for the errors. But yeah, what you're seeing on the slide is wrong. The the FastBridge literacy data from Marin, overall, we're at an eighty percent, eighty four percent of our students are performing above average. Our Latinx students are at seventy one percent above average. Our Black African American students are seventy percent above average. And there still is an achievement gap there compared to the eighty four percent above average. And and we are working hard to close that. Our two or more races are above average, actually, in ELA and at eighty six percent. Our students are socioeconomically disadvantaged, students are at seventy one percent, and our students with disabilities are at forty eight. In math as well, overall, I apologize that those numbers are wrong. The all all students are performing eighty two percent above at or above average. Our Latinx students are at seventy six percent. Our Black African American students are at seventy five. Two or more races, seventy six. So all very similar there. Same with ELs. These numbers are very similar, seventy six percent. And our students with disabilities, sixty one percent. And our socioeconomically disadvantaged group is at eighty two percent. So same as the overall rate. I'll correct those. Those are corrected in the presentation. Successes, challenges and changes are very similar to what my colleagues have said. I do want to emphasize that one of the most successful things we've done this year, in my opinion, especially with work on closing our achievement gaps, is implementing FastBridge assessments. That was a major lift this year for teachers coming back to school in person. It was a lot of work. I'm not going to minimize that, and it wasn't just at Marin. It was at all three sites, but I feel like we're in a good place now to continue with next, to continue on next year and really have some really good baselines and see some progress and some change and really target our students that that are in need of academic support. So I'm really excited about that. It was a lot of work for everybody this year, including, you know, folks who went in to support other classrooms to get that FastBridge data. And I'm really psyched that we have it. So next slide, please. In terms of strategies, activities to support goal one, they're all very similar to what Ocean View and Cornell have had as well. I want to emphasize the importance of releasing and days for for teachers for assessment and collaboration. I want to point out that a struggle that that we had this year was that so many are especially our first grade teachers, and I know Marin kindergarten is at Ocean View this year, but our kindergarten and first grade teachers needed a significant amount of time outside of the classroom to gather the FastBridge data. And that is, that was a challenge. We don't like our, while we value the the importance of the data and getting the information, we, I I think, and I speak for the whole team, is that we we feel like our student, our students are better served when our teachers are in the classroom as much as possible. And so refining our FastBridge protocols and identifying specifically what which tests or screeners that we can give quickly and get the information quickly, we're hoping to decrease the number of days our teachers are required to be out of the classroom to give these very important assessments. All right, next slide, please. Another strategy I want to focus on here is with math support. Marin has, over the past five years, taken a portion of our reading intervention, FTE allocation, and allotted that to math. And I'm really, while our, it's been a pro, it's been a process and a learning a learning area, growth edge for all of us. And I want to say that because our student population, our numbers have gone down with our kindergarten at Marin or at our kindergarten Ocean View and just our population declining in general, I believe, to our temporary housing facilities. Our FTE has gone down as well, which is appropriate. I get it. But I also want to give a shout out to my intervention teachers who understand the need to serve the student need as opposed to the adult specialty. So I've talked to my intervention team about taking a look at our data from this year and appropriately aligning the time that we spend on intervention services to the students who need it based on the subject, not on what their specific assignment is. So EL teachers might be, you know, supporting math intervention as well, and same with reading intervention. And I'm really proud of my staff for for being willing to to stretch and grow and learn in this area. It's exciting. So we're hoping to see some really good gains next year. Next slide, please. L cap goal two and the Marin SIPs a goal is the same, right, as as my colleagues focus on social emotional learning. Next slide, please. One identified need I want to highlight without going through all the bits is that we are on an open campus at Albany High. And that is presenting some challenges that we are dealing with in terms of safety protocols, visitors, visitors to the pool and folks just being on campus. It it requires a significant need for campus supervision that we are managing. And but I just want to point that out as a challenge that we didn't have when we were sequestered away on our gated campus, which was what which felt open to me at the time, but this is even more open, being at Albany High. And we're grateful to be in our temporary facilities at Albany High and the middle school as well. And boy, are we looking forward to that beautiful new building that just keeps going up. So our annual measurable outcomes for goal two are similar to, you know, the data points are similar to Cornell and Ocean Views with California Healthy Kids Survey for its first students and staff and our absentee data and our suspension rate. We have been working hard on getting our suspension rate down, implementing some restorative practices there and and taking a look at those pieces. And I also want to say, too, I feel like part of the reason our suspension doubt has gone down is well, just to be super frank, in times when when we had an SDC class at Marin, I noticed that some of our students were being suspended because of health and safety issues that that were being presented at school. And I feel like that contributes to our decline, given that we don't have an SDC class at Marin this year. And I want to point out that our friends at Ocean View and Cornell do have SDC classes there, which may impact suspension rates. Next slide, please. Oh, you're already on it. Successes and challenges in this in on goal number two. I think what I want to highlight here is our conflict manager program. We really struggled to implement many of the programs that we had previously before remote learning and our conflict manager program. We got off the ground this year, it after January, after that January surge. And all of our parents signed walking field trip permission slips, and our fourth and fifth graders walked down to the San Gabriel campus at the middle school to support first and second graders with managing their conflicts. And I think it was a really great bringing back of an old program with a different twist, you know, with this, you know, walking field trip piece. And and it's a way to connect our campuses. We struggled at Marin this year with feeling connected as a school in general because of remote learning. And we had the additional challenges of moving on to our temporary facilities, which split us up onto two different campuses. So this was one way that we were able to come together. Next slide, please. Strategies and activities to support goals two or goal two are very similar, PBIS. We're looking forward to, you know, bringing back many of these pieces that we've that we've missed from remote learning. Next slide, please. And yep, next slide, please. Thank you. All right. So L cap goal three, communicating and collaborating, similar to Ocean View and Cornell. Next slide. Our identified need here is definitely participation. We have not had nearly, we haven't been able to have the volunteers that we've had in the past. And we look forward to having more volunteers in the future. I also want to highlight the bit in the in the paragraph there about valuing diverse voices and differing perspectives. As one of my colleagues pointed out previously, we are working hard to integrate different perspectives and diverse voices in starting with our hiring practices that are happening right now, looking to get a more diverse teaching staff for next year and include those voices as we move forward in all aspects of what we do at Marin, whether it be in hiring or with the PTA or with the site council or, you know, any of any of the parent participation groups that we have there. Next slide, please. Annual annual measurable outcomes. I'm really proud to say that our office staff hopped on the phone and and got a hundred percent of our families contactable on Parents Square. That was a big lift for them, especially, and I want to remind you, we're on two different sites. So I have a split staff. And and so it takes a lot of coordination because you're not sitting right next to them, and they were able to get a hundred percent of our families on to Parents Square. The the school, the California Schools Parent Survey, those are placeholders for the data that we get next year. And fifteen percent of our EL families attended our Fall ELAC Meeting. And I believe, next slide, please. So yeah, same as Ocean View and Marin, this is new to the SIPSAS. So we'll look forward to our baseline next year and analyzing growth next year. Next slide, please. And Marin's next step, communicating with communicated with and informed regularly about policies and procedures is going to be really important. Getting our school handbook distributed this summer via Aries during that data verification process. We've already had conversations about our parent ed events are wonderful. Our our idea committee has been putting those on and supported by the PTA and that. And they've just been fantastic. We just had Rosetta Lee talk to our families about how to deal with conflicts and bullying at home and at school. So yeah, we would love to have more participation in school events and have more in-person events next year and recruit parents to participate as members on all of the different committees and again, encouraging those diverse voices, especially. Next slide, please. These are very similar to my colleagues' slides. So next slide, please. And yeah, Marin's next steps, want to highlight here, increasing opportunities for teacher to review that data, right? We we worked really hard to implement the or the FastBridge assessments, and we look forward to really analyzing where we can grow next year. This concludes the for the coordination, the formation of a cost team that Liz and Michelle spoke about and supporting best best practice to best practices to improve and adjust current tier one, two and three practices. And with our emphasis being on tier one, which is the general education classroom, we're going to continue work on our PBIS strategies and continue to welcome families to campus as much as possible. And that wraps it up for Marin.
Great. Thank you. I don't know, Dr. Shen, you wanted to close it out or if we can move to board questions and comments?
Please feel free to move to board questions and comments. Thank you.
Great. So we do have a closed session at six. I want to make sure we have a little transition time. Whoops, wrong set of notes. Any questions, comments, board? I have a question about, I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen the California School Staff Survey results. So I just made a note for us to make sure the board gets a presentation on that. I mean, we get the Healthy Kids Survey results, although we've missed some time. And then also, could somebody tell me a little about the staff mental health program, what that is? I don't remember which site mentioned it, but.
That's something that's been being provided from the district. I think Jackie is best suited to to or maybe if she's available. Sorry to put you on the spot, Jackie, but it's something that I'm really psyched that the district is providing to staff right now. And while we've been publicizing the access to to staff in our weekly newsletters, we're not coordinating any of those services, but it's just access to more mental health support. So.
Okay, I could ask for for details later. And then on the behave, so when when we approved the revised middle school behavior matrix, we talked a little bit in the meetings about, you know, how do we kind of align? What's the plan for aligning all of them in age-appropriate ways? So a couple of you mentioned this. So I just wanted to hear, are you three working together to try to align that across the elementary level? Is there, what's what's the sort of status of of how you're thinking about that? And maybe, again, I don't remember which one of you mentioned wanting to incorporate more of the restorative justice models that are being used. So I just, if one of you could speak a little bit to how that work might evolve.
Well, I'm the one who brought it up, and partly that's because my matrices for behavior haven't been, we we haven't looked at them this year. And so, and since that time, since pre-COVID, and then just in the last spring, the middle school did so much work. So I am planning, and I had been planning to look at our matrices starting in June, right at the end of this year and next year, beginning of next year. And I've already been referring to some of the stuff that's been going on at the middle school, and that's been really helpful, particularly helping kids who are transitioning to the middle school. So that's just, I just have an eye to that, and I would like to share that and think about that. I'm not sure how it incorporates with for younger students, but I did, we did a lot of that with Alexia when we were, when I was with her at the high school. So I would love to get to know more about it for the younger students.
I can just add that.
I can just add that, sorry. I was gonna add that at what we did at Ocean View, we have a whole new campus with whole new play structure, et cetera. So as I had the whole staff involved in this and we went out and we 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 watched the kids play. We watched the kids move around the campus and we saw the areas that really, we really needed to focus on. And those are common areas. A behavior matrix is normally for common areas with the understanding that each class has their own positive system. So it's all based on positives. You never say, don't run, you say, walk, you know. So we we developed that as a team, as a site. And I think we all, as schools, use the same methods through the best practices. It's a book, a really excellent book, and it takes you step by step on how to do this.
We had a similar situation at Marin because we were on a new campus. And so we were, we had to take a look at these and it's it's, I'm glad that we did and can certainly support next year with with taking a look at those at Cornell for sure.
Thank you.
I think Vice Assistant Principal Dos has, Dodson has a lot of great information on that too. Definitely.
Thank you. Trustee Dos.
Thank you so much. First, Melissa, Principal Poole, sorry. I really appreciate that you kind of pointed out and stated that there was gonna be emphasis on, you know, diversifying your staff and and I see the percentages that went up, you know, with the students. And, you know, I just wanted to highlight that. I think that's great and I'm really excited that you're tackling that. It's not an easy task, but it is a important one. So I really appreciate that you're tackling that. So I just wanted to, you know, say that. And I have two questions. One, Ocean View has a kind of math intervention program. And I'm wondering what the math intervention programs look like at the other sites. And a lot of things have been duplicated amongst the three sites. And I'm wondering if that's something that could be duplicated. You know, similar to, hey, Ocean View's got a cool sign that is super helpful. Let's get them to sign like Ocean View, but then let's also get them the math program like Ocean View too. So I'm just wondering the details on that and when, how early students can start in that program. And then my second question is, because we have another meeting that's coming up really soon, is there an opportunity to have more opportunity to kind of discuss and ask questions? Because I think it's unrealistic to think that we can kind of digest all this wonderful information and really kind of get to the meat and the bones of everything without a substantial amount of time to do. Thank you.
Let me take the second question and Ms. Poole and others can take the first. The second question, I really appreciate that, trustee Dos. In an interim, I'll ask the board to read all the SIPS plans and feel free to forward questions to me that I can answer and send back to all the board members. That's one way to get your answers and not be so rushed. You can take your time, so we will entertain those questions anytime, understanding how important they are. Speaking of important question, the question trustee just just asked is very important. Math program, tutoring program at one school, what about the other two schools? So that's the question.
Can can I just clarify on that? We all get the same amount of funds for math intervention. We just use them differently. And I don't have a math intervention certificated teacher. We use ours for math club and after-school homework support. And so we don't, we are, we are getting more FTE based on our numbers next year for intervention. And I am going to do something similar to Principal Poole and I'm going to take part of a percentage and devote that to math. But we we all pretty much are equally distributed. It's school care money.
Yeah, it's school care money and it's, the total is about fifteen thousand dollars per school for for math intervention, which does provide hourly after-school and some of it happens during that early or late bird hour. So we do have the same, but we're going to do the same and utilize our intervention teachers in different ways, actually based on the proportional proportional data that we get from Fast Bridge. So, you know, the number of students that are struggling in math versus in reading will try to proportion out our intervention for for math. So we're all, we're all really focused on that. So it's a great question, trustee Dos.
Thank you.
I was just gonna ask a follow-up, which is the, so the budget proposal we saw yesterday was included of one FTE math coach at elementary. I'm wondering if one of you could talk a little bit about how you see that fitting in?
Yeah, I, that's, that's part of what I was, I was gonna jump in and talk about. I really appreciate the question as well and I appreciate the the focus that the and collaboration that Liz and Michelle and I have had with math and and how to serve students and using Fast Bridge data to identify which students we we serve. And that, seeing that the math coach position was on the board workshop plan for yesterday was really heartening because it feels like we've been talking about math intervention for a while and needing math intervention for a while. My understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I have, you know, just a few details on this, is the math coach person would not be serving students, but would be serving, you know, intervention teachers who are shifting their practice to look at math and general education teachers to refine their approach in the classroom, those tier one supports. And on the one hand, you know, I, when I first, you know, realized that, I kind of had a reaction. I was like, wait, we need to serve the kids, right? We need to do that, that's the urgency there. But then thinking, taking a step back and recognizing that this person would build the capacity of many in our district to serve all of the kids is just really exciting to think about the gains that can be made there. So I don't know a whole lot other than that about the position, but I'm excited and and I appreciate, Dr. Wells, you're hearing the the need for that and the board for supporting the the need for more math support at our at our sites. So thank you to all of you. Yeah.
I think trustee Dos had one more question maybe, and then trustee Dana had her hand up. So go ahead, trustee Dos.
Yeah. So follow-up question would be, I know often when we talk about like math intervention, it's mentioned aligned with, you know, the funding from, you know, school care. But it sounds as if, or I shouldn't say sounds as if, math is something that we're responsible for teaching as a district. And it's the Fast Bridge and we analyze data and we have kind of all these things surrounding it. I'm wondering why something so important is kind of being tasked or put in the hands of school care, which is optional, and they don't have to dedicate those funds to this. It is their choice of where they want to dedicate the funds, but it's not our choice to teach and provide exceptional math, you know, to to the students. So because it's something that's not optional, I'm wondering why it's being kind of left in the hands of school care funding versus being part of the general fund? Because it is actually our responsibility for all of our students to be doing well in math.
So I think that's exactly what we're saying. We're saying that relying on fifteen thousand dollars per school for it math intervention funding from school care is not sufficient. And we are, we recognize that and we're agreeing wholeheartedly with you. And so that's why we're restructuring the use of our intervention funds and we want to increase the intervention at the multi, at the tier one within the classroom. So this is, this is a major shift that you have identified very clearly and it's really important to us. We love the school care money, the additional money. That's really wonderful to have some after, some some funds to do some after-school stuff. But that, you are a hundred percent right, it should be happening during the day, within the FTE and within the, you know, all of the teachers being supported. And that's exactly what we're talking about. So we really are on board with you. And that's where, that's a huge shift, actually, this year. And we're, we're, we're helping our intervention teachers shift. We already have curriculum purchase. We did that last year, so we do have some great intervention curriculum. And so we just need to expand the F, not expand the FTE, reutilize, reallocate our FTE that we have been given.
That's really, that's, 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 that's really, that's really exciting. There's been a lot of exciting things that were kind of laid out today and and and, you know, different from the past, you know, when we've done these. You know, it's been, I can see that there's like been some thought that's kind of, you know, went in, went into it. And I apologize that we don't have more time to really kind of dive into it because I know, you know, all three of you, along with your teams, you know, worked really hard on these presentations. I really wanted the opportunity to really kind of dive into all of this. So, but I will submit kind of follow-up questions. I'll CC all of you on it so that we can be collaborative and figure out how we can support you all and and support our students as we, as we move forward. And as President Healy said, we'll get this all worked out so I can have my camera on the whole time next time, I promise.
Trustee Dana, did you have a question? You had your hand up, but.
Yeah, I just, I had very similar questions to the ones that you asked. And so I don't find them quite relevant anymore. But I would like to say thank you so much for the work and the effort that you put into this presentation. It was really just informative, knowing, not knowing kind of what goes on at the elementary school. And so, yeah, that that was, it was really helpful and I just wanted to express my gratitude.
Thank you. Principal Ray Mueller.
Yeah, I just wanted to also acknowledge that the the goal of diversifying our elementary teaching staff is is a priority that is, we understand is a priority of the district. Marina has spent a lot of time working with all of us on that. And and so it is a, not only a goal, but we're actively doing our best to to do that. And it, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, but some things can happen overnight. So we're doing our best when we have positions open to to focus on that. We understand it is very important for students.
Great, thank you. So for the board, as a reminder, please do read all of these documents because we will vote to approve them, I think, on the fourteenth as part of our consent agenda. So I assume everyone's read them all before tonight, but if not, please make sure that you know what you're voting for. And thanks again to you all for putting together both the plans and also the presentation. It was really great to to see it organized the way that it was with the goals and and really look forward to. And it's great to have them aligned in the way that they are as well. So thank you for not just the work you're doing on your site, but for working together. It's really great to see the teamwork. And and that's, that's it for our discussion. It is unfortunately short, but these are themes. I think this came up last time too. These are themes that will recur through the next two board meetings as we talk about the LCAP and the budget and again, approve these plans. So please, we won't drop these themes. And so with that, thank you for the workshop and we are adjourned for this part of our our day. And I will see some of you at six o'clock. And you should have a special invitation for that meeting. So thanks, everybody, and have a good night or hour or fifteen minutes.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.